Call the October first, two thousand nineteen City Council Meeting to Order. I invite Councilman Brooks to lead us in our invocation and our pledge.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This morning, I would like to introduce and present to others Reverend Larry Mercer, who is the pastor at Cerro Gordo Missionary Baptist Church, a man who has meant so much to so many, a man from the revered Mercer family, and a man who has led a congregation to save souls and change lives for over twenty-seven years. My only regret, Mayor, is that his church is not in my district. But again, Reverend Larry Mercer.
Good morning, Father. We thank you for this day you afforded us. We thank you for your goodness, love, and kindness, and tend the mercy. We pray now, Father, that we come together in this appointed place, that you will fill us spiritually, guidance, and direct our hearts and minds, unify our efforts here today, that Jackson can become a better city. We thank you, God, for our new elected mayor. We thank you for this council. We ask for the wisdom that only come from you, that they do do those things that will be pleasing in your sight, lest this meeting in a mighty way. For that, we'll give you glory, give you honor, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. My pledge and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item three is roll call. Anita, I think you can show all council members are present. Item four is approval of minutes in the September third council meeting. Any additions or corrections? If not, the minutes will be approved as read. Before we get to proclamations, I want to call on Councilmember Wallace. She has a special recognition this morning.
Good morning. We are honored to have several members of the class of two thousand nineteen Leadership Jackson, and if you all would stand right now, you're looking at some of the, some great future leaders of our community, and also would like to recognize Russ. He is one of the chairmen.
That's Councilman McKelvey.
That's not, that's not what that guy is. It's mustache man. But anyway, we will move forward. But we're very proud to have you all today, and thanks for your interest and your concern for Jackson. Thank you for being here.
You ought to be ashamed.
All right. We've lost control already. Next, we have proclamations. We have two this morning. And before I get to proclamations, I want to take a moment to recognize two of our outstanding employees. It's always great to be able to recognize our employees for their years of service in the city of Jackson, but today is special because we have two employees that are celebrating forty years of service in the city of Jackson. And so I'm going to ask Banker Cole and William Comer if they will come up here so we can recognize them for their years of service in the city of Jackson.
All right.
Great job, Mr. Cole. Great job, Senator.
Mayor, forty years, I think they deserve a standing ovation.
Thank you both for your years of service and your many years of service to come. I appreciate that. Our first proclamation is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So if those of you who are involved with this want to come up here, not all at once. Y'all come on around here. Don't hide behind that pillar right there. Come on around. See, you're still hiding. Come on, come on. Come on, don't hide. All right. Whereas there were seventy-three thousand five hundred and sixty-eight domestic violence reports, and on average, fifty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-three Tennessee women who experienced domestic violence in Tennessee in two thousand eighteen. Whereas children accounted for seven thousand five hundred and fifty or nine point eight percent of domestic violence victims in Tennessee in two thousand eighteen. Whereas Tennessee reported ninety-eight victims killed by an intimate partner in two thousand eighteen. Whereas the abuse of a family member can have a long-term damaging impact on survivors and their children that impacts family, friends, and the community at large. Whereas families are indispensable to a stable society and should be a place of support to instill responsibility and values in the next generation. Whereas domestic violence is widespread and is devastating to society as a whole, but particularly to women and children. Whereas violence against women and children is a prevalent social ill due to the historical imbalance of power and gender and age. Whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people across its all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers, and is sustained by societal indifference. Whereas the survivors of domestic violence should have help to find the compassion, comfort, and healing they need, and domestic violence, domestic violence abusers should be held fully accountable for their crimes against persons and the community. Whereas our community has a civic and moral obligation to work to prevent domestic violence, to address its brutal and destructive effects, and to make ending domestic violence a community priority. Now therefore, in recognition of the important work being done by our community to prevent domestic violence, support survivors of domestic violence, and to hold perpetrators of such violence accountable for their crimes against the community, we Scott Conger, Mayor of the City of Jackson, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim October two thousand nineteen as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to become aware of this destructive force in our society, and to become a part of the efforts to build safe, stable, nurturing relationships and families.
Jennifer McCraw, I'm the Director of the Safe Hope Center, and if you're not familiar with what the Safe Hope Center is, we're a family justice center that has been located here in Jackson since two thousand fifteen. And what that is, is a collaboration of agencies, and we have representatives from all of those agencies here today with us who work together every day to serve people who have been victims of domestic or sexual violence. And our number one concern is victim safety and then offender accountability. So I really appreciate all of you being here today. We have representatives from the DA's office, from West Tennessee Legal Services, a whole bunch from RAP. We have survivors here. We have representatives from Jackson Police Department. So just want to thank you, Mayor and Mayor Harris, for this proclamation, and know that we're working diligently every day to stop this problem, and we need your help. So please keep us in your, in your thoughts and prayers as we do this work, especially our advocates at the Safe Hope Center, and we thank you for having us today.
Good morning, everyone. First, I want to thank God for being here, and I want to thank God for RAP and Mayor and everyone. When I was growing up, I, I didn't know anything about domestic violence and anything. I grew up in a home that was really bad. My mother was beat all the time, and so was I, but I thought that was just part of growing up. But as I got older and got into relationships, I went, started going to RAP about five years ago, and Deborah was my advocate. And she taught me, learned me how to difference between healthy and unhealthy relationship. I thought that if a guy hit you, you know, that's the only way it could be healthy, unhealthy if he hit you. But I didn't know anything about financial abuse, controlling issues. So through RAP, I learned that being in a relationship, you don't, the man don't, not, that's, excuse me, a little nervous, not necessarily have to hit you, but just the words come out of his mouth. And you know, and I was involved with that, and he would tell me things like, you know, where will you be without me? You know, I ain't hit you. You know, kept up with the time I left home, the time I got back home. So I thought that was part of, just because he loved me, but it was just control. So I learned through RAP that a man that loves you, he won't do all those, he'll trust you. So I thank God, because I was basically had given up on life before RAP. And now, you know, I'm getting ready to start school in January, you know, I'm, I'm having a, you know, my coping, my coping mechanism was drinking. Now I'm clean for probably seven years now, and so I just thank God for just being a part of my life, and thank God for RAP. Like I said, I wouldn't make it, I wouldn't have made it without, first of all, God in my life, and RAP teaching me these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have a proclamation celebrating our thirty-sixth Annual National Night Out. So whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program entitled National Night Out, whereas the National Night Out event provides an opportunity for neighbors in Jackson to join over thirty-eight million people in sixteen thousand communities from all fifty states and military bases worldwide. Whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer places to live. Whereas neighbors in the city of Jackson assist the police department through joint community efforts and support National Night Out locally. Whereas it is essential that all citizens of the city of Jackson be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the city of Jackson. Now therefore, I, Scott Conger, Mayor of the City of Jackson, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October first, two thousand nineteen, as the thirty-sixth anniversary of National Night Out, and urge all citizens to join in supporting this worthwhile event through participation in their neighborhoods and making efforts to form lasting bonds with those in their surrounding community. Present you this proclamation.
I would just like to thank the Mayor, the Chief, for allowing us to participate in this program. I urge the citizens, as far as city employees, please go out and support the citizens that take the time, put the party together, because this is a voluntary effort, and I really do appreciate the citizens that do take the time to have a block party, to get out and mingle with the city employees, fire police officials. Thank you once again.
All right. Item six is an invitation for public comment. Anyone who has, wants to speak in opposition of or in favor, opposition to or in favor of, any item on first reading, you raise your hand at that time, you'll be recognized. Item seven, first readings, consideration of an ordinance to amend the official code of the City of Jackson, Title twelve, Chapter three, City Tree Board.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
You have in your packet this ordinance, and again, as I stated in pre-agenda, I would ask that you, if there's a motion to approve it, that you do it with the modification that it say that the existing chapter be deleted in its entirety and replaced with this one. Now, right now, it says amended like it's a new chapter. We would have brought you those amended copies, but our server was down because of the power outage last night, so I wasn't able to print those out for you, but we'll have them for you before second reading. Again, as, as stated in the ordinance, we're basically just changing the composition of that board, the membership. The Mayor and the Director of Parks and Rec were the, were members of that board, and we've made them ex officio like they are on many of our boards, and now we'll have two constituents that will now make up those two slots. So it will be citizenry making up the commission, the tree board, just like many of our boards and commissions.
I approve.
Second. So Stan, the motion needs to read deleting.
Yeah, it should read, you know, deleting the existing chapter in its entirety and replacing with the following, and that's what's there.
Councilmember Cisco, that's your motion? Okay, perfect. Have a motion in a second. We'll open this for a public hearing. Anyone who wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item two in the first readings is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the official code of the City of Jackson, Title twelve, Chapter two, Keep Jackson Beautiful Commission.
And again, with this ordinance, we'd ask that you do the same, that you modify that ordinance to read deleting the existing chapter in its entirety and replacing with the following. This again is a membership change. This, this commission had twenty-four members on it, which we felt were, was kind of too large and not, not that manageable. Now we've reduced that number to eleven. Now that doesn't discount the people that have been involved and can, that have been volunteers, and it's still a, a very volunteer-driven commission, and those people are still going to be a part of the process, and it hasn't, you know, basically discounted those people. It's basically allowed them to become volunteers and continue doing what they've been doing, but we felt like the business part of that commission would be better handled by a smaller number of individuals. So that's what we're doing here.
I move to approve the modification. Is this section two, two oh two, in the, in the ordinance?
Have a motion in a second. I will open this up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to? Seeing no, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Stand, item eight, second readings. One is a consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located eleven thirty-two Rushmead Road from RG one, General Residential District, to SC one, Planned Unit Commercial Development District comprising of point four oh, point forty acres submitted by Gary Taylor. Any questions for Stan?
So move.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passes with eight members in favor, one abstaining.
Item two is a consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at the northeast corner of East Orleans and Hurt Street from RG two, General Residential District, to IO Wholesale and Warehouse District comprising of point five six acres submitted by Ronnie Hicks.
So move.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion by council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three is a consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at Van Drive at Rushmead Road from RG one, General Residential District, to SC one, Planned Unit Commercial Development District comprising of point seven oh acres submitted by the staff.
So move.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with eight members in favor, one abstaining.
Item four is a consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located between Dr. Effie Wright Drive, Watson Road, and US Highway seventy east from I one, Planned Industrial Park District, to SC one, Planned Unit Commercial Development District comprising of three hundred and sixty point five acres submitted by staff.
So move.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thanks, Stan. Item nine is new business. One is consideration of a bond resolution authorizing the sale of providing the details of not to exceed six point two million dollars in general obligation bond, Series two thousand nineteen, the City of Jackson, and providing the levy, ah, abilerm on taxes in connection therewith.
Thank you, Mayor Conger. Good morning.
Good morning.
The first thing I'd like to do this morning is introduce two guests that we have here with us. First, Nick Yatsula. Nick, if you'll raise your hand or stand. Nick is Senior Advisor with PFM in Memphis, and has served as our Municipal Financial Advisor on the transactions that you're going to consider this morning. And Mr. Doug Earthman, Doug is with Glankler Brown, also from Memphis, and Doug has served as Bond Counsel on the proposed transactions that you're going to consider this morning. Both these gentlemen and their firm have been good partners for the city, and I appreciate them being here this morning in case you have some questions. So we do have two resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one would be to approve the issuance of general obligation bonds not to exceed six point two million dollars to fund capital projects for the city this year. The second resolution, again, would be general obligation refunding bonds not to exceed sixty-nine million dollars. Before we get to the actual resolutions, what I think hopefully will be helpful, I have about three slides to share with you this morning that summarizes the financial transaction that would result from the, the resolutions that you're going to be considering this morning. The Series two thousand nineteen bond summary, the bonds will be issued for the following purposes, to fund capital improvements of approximately six million dollars, and to refund existing debt in order to reduce debt service costs.
Zoom that in, help him zoom that in a little bit.
So again, the, the new money issue to fund capital improvements, so the refunding issue would be to take advantage of the financial opportunity to reduce our debt service costs, and also to convert some variable rate debt that we have now to fixed rate debt. The projected sale date for this transaction would be October seventeenth. We hope to close on this transaction and actually receive the bond proceeds on October the twenty-ninth. We anticipate bond proceeds totaling six million forty-five thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars on the new money issue, and bond proceeds totaling sixty-eight million four hundred eighty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars on the refunding transaction. Estimated interest cost on the, on the new money would be between two point five and three percent, and on the refunding money between two percent and two and a half percent. All of the bonds would be callable at the end of ten years at par. And the payment dates would run through two thousand thirty-nine on the new money and through two thousand thirty-eight on the refunded debt. So this is a, a summary of the refunding itself. We'll be refunding sixty-seven million five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars of existing debt that the, the city has today. This debt is, the various series are listed there in the kind of middle of the page, Series two thousand nine bonds, Series two thousand nine refunding bonds, Series two thousand eleven Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund loan, two thousand thirteen Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund, two thousand fifteen Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund, and two thousand eighteen Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund. It's important to note that the Series two thousand thirteen and two thousand fifteen Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund, those are currently variable rate debt bonds. We feel like it's important, given low interest rates now, and to fix those rates at a fixed rate moving forward, that will allow the city to not only avoid future rate risk with rising interest rates, but also to better plan and prepare for our debt service requirements. At the top there, you'll see that the estimated present value savings on this refunding for the city in present value dollars today, future cash flows, present value dollars today, would be three point nine million dollars, or five point nine percent of the total bonds that we're refunding. All right. All right. This schedule is representative, a representative summary of our debt service fund overview after this transaction. So if you'll bear with me as I take you through this, I hope you find this helpful. So we're going to start with the, the very first column on the left. It's headed up prior debt service on refunded debt, and if you'll drop down to the total at the bottom there, you, you will see that the current debt on debt service on the bonds that we are proposing to refund totals eighty-one million three hundred and three thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The next column is, the second column over, it's the refunding debt service, and you'll see at the bottom there that the debt service on those same bonds moving forward after we refund or refinance, refinance them would total seventy-seven million one hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. And the difference there in the third column of four million one ninety-three eight oh nine would be the gross cash savings over the life of the debt service that the city will save from this refunding transaction. The column in the middle there, Series two thousand nineteen, new money debt service. Remember, at a time when we are refunding bonds in order to save on our debt service, we're also issuing an amount not to exceed six point two million dollars to fund our current capital needs. And the future debt service on that new issue would total seven point seven million dollars between the years twenty twenty-one and, or twenty twenty and twenty thirty-nine. So if you'll follow me now over to the column that is headed total debt service, refunding debt service plus new money debt service, and drop down to the total there, that is eighty-four million eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So this would represent the debt service moving forward on the debt that we are refunding plus the debt service that's required for the new money issue. The next column to the right is a recommendation that we're making today that, this column really does not impact the resolutions that you're considering this morning, but this is a resolution, a recommendation that we would like to make to the council for future consideration, and this decision would actually be made when the council considers the twenty twenty-one budget is when this decision would actually be made, but we wanted to represent it to you here this morning. The city fortunately has accumulated about a one million dollar fund balance in the debt service fund in recent years. That's primarily resulted from the fact that each year with the variable rate debt, the city has to project or budget for what we think that variable rate debt may be. And fortunately, in recent years, the actual variable rate debt has been less than the funding that we put into the debt service fund to take care of that debt. So we've accumulated about a million dollar fund balance. It's being recommended that we consider spending down some of that fund balance to relieve some of the near-term pressure on our debt service funds, and we've suggested two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year beginning in the twenty twenty-one year. And the final column here that says.
Excuse me just a minute, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me just a second, Mr., uh, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Arnold, will, from the fund balance, you're suggesting next year to do what now?
So, uh, we're suggesting in the, uh, twenty-one fiscal year, we're in the nineteen-twenty year now, but in the twenty twenty-one fiscal year, we currently have about a one million dollar, um, fund balance in the debt service fund, and we're suggesting that we take two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that fund balance per year for four years and pay down our debt.
And that's just your suggestion? We're not voting on that today?
That's correct.
No, no, I just, I just want a clarification on that.
And that's not our general fund balance, as in the debt service?
That's our debt service.
Right, mm-hmm. That's the fund balance.
For the, for the debt service.
Right, mm-hmm.
Correct.
Okay, just want to clarify.
Sure.
And the answer to my question is, we're not voting on that today?
No, we're not voting on that today. Uh, what we wanted to, uh, uh, represent to you this morning, uh, uh, the value of the ref- the savings from the refunding, plus the required, uh, debt service on the new issue, and if we were to choose to do this, what our debts, what impact that would have, uh, in aggregate on our debt service. And, uh, that's the last two columns on this, uh, particular schedule. Uh, and if you'll look at the, the last column, the, the decrease, uh, is indicated by a positive number. Uh, the increase in debt service is indicated by a negative number there. If you drop down to the bottom, if we, uh, proceed with the, the two resolutions that, uh, you're considering this morning, uh, and if we were to decide in the twenty-one year to begin to invest part of that fund balance in debt retirement, to pay down the debt, uh, you can see in that last column, uh, what the impact would be. And just to summarize that for you, if you'll drop down to the bottom number there, uh, we refund the debt, sixty-nine million dollars worth of debt. We save, uh, four point one million dollars in doing that. We issue, uh, six million dollars in new debt for capital projects. Uh, and, uh, the result of all of that over the life of the, the debt service would be an increase in our debt service of two million five hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. It's important to remember, again, we're, we're both refunding current debt to save money, but we are also issuing new debt totaling six million dollars. Just for a reference point, uh, if we had just issued the new debt of six million dollars, and we had not pursued the refunding savings of four million, uh, then the increase in the debt service over the life of this would have been like six point seven million, rather than only two point five million.
Mr. Chairman, he, he, uh, Mr. Arnold just covered items one and two, correct?
He, he, yeah, covered both of them. We had to vote on them separately then.
Okay.
Right.
I, I, I have a question, if I may, and I had contacted you, Bobby, to get the cost of issuance...
Right.
On, on both of the, uh, the new money and the refunding. Can you discuss that just for a minute to give, for the record, to give us an idea of those costs?
Sure. Uh, let me locate that. The estimated cost of issuance would be, uh, four hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and six dollars, uh, most of that being the, uh, estimated underwriters discount.
Is that for both? Is that the total for both?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, uh, uh, but also included in that would be the municipal advisor, bond counsel fee, uh, the cost of securing a credit rating, uh, with Standard and Poor's. We had that phone call yesterday, um, so I'm optimistic about that, uh, the results of that.
Did you, did you find out what our rating was?
Well, we, we will find out, uh, October seventh. Uh, I think that's, uh, what is that, next, next Monday maybe? Uh, but we did have, um, that conversation with, uh, Standard and Poor's yesterday, and, uh, I, uh, believe that, that conference went well.
Bobby, uh, let me interrupt you just a second. I believe Nick had something he wanted to include, just for clarification, I think.
Thank you.
Just to the point on the cost of issuance, um, can everybody hear me? Uh, the forty-three is just for the refunding piece. So, um, there's an additional, about forty-one thousand related to the new money piece. This is from the, uh, State Comptroller's report, and so they only report out, um, on the refunding piece, on the cost of issuance. So, similar, um, expense line items up there for the new money, except for, I think that's about, I think that about covers it. Um, but yeah, there is an additional, there is an additional forty thousand for the new money.
Okay, and your firm is advising us on both?
Yes.
The new money and the refunding?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
No problem.
Appreciate it, man. Kick around.
Okay.
He's handy, isn't he, Bobby?
That's right, that's right.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Arnold, so we are on time on this, this timeline we have for the bonds?
We, we are. So, uh, again, uh, the, the date to go to market to sell the bonds would be October seventeenth, and, uh, we hope to close on the bonds and receive the bond proceeds on October twenty-ninth.
Do we see ourselves bringing a capital plan, the capital plan before us in the upcoming meeting?
Okay. You're talking about the upcoming?
The, in the future meeting.
The new capital?
Yeah, the new capital.
So, um, any other questions about that information? If not, we can move to the actual, um, resolutions themselves.
So we'll start with item one. That's a consideration of the, the new money, six point two million dollar general obligation Series two thousand nineteen bonds. Any further questions on that? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
All right, and item two is the consideration of a bond resolution authorizing the sale and providing the details not to exceed sixty-nine million general obligation refunding bond, Series two thousand nineteen. Any further discussion on that item? Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
All right. Item, think about it. Item three is, um, consideration of a report on debt obligation, information purposes only. Already gone through that as well?
Mayor Conger and Council, uh, if you remember at the pre-agenda meeting, I, uh, stated that this is an information-only item. It's a two or three-page report that is the final step anytime monies are borrowed by a municipality. It was left off inadvertently in the two thousand and ten, what we call HUD loan. It's not included in anything that Mr. Arnold presented up here, because it's more like a grant. It funded the CRA program of a billion six for District one and a billion six for District two, but it is, uh, a reimbursable situation. It's hard to understand. We are billed by HUD through Jackson Housing Authority. We make the payment twice a year, principal and interest. Within sixty days, that money comes right back to us. So it's a war, and it's not included in our reports, because it's not to be, it's nothing that could be refunded. So, uh, this is just for information only. Uh, we will have another CTO two-five-three when we get the six point two million dollar monies later this month. It'll be on the next council agenda. Any questions?
Thank you, Al. Item four is creation of the city of Jackson Commission on Aging.
All right, good morning, members. Um, here to talk about the Commission on Aging. It's not as interesting as what Bobby was up here talking about, but I'm excited about it nonetheless. Uh, the larger cities in Tennessee and throughout the country, they have these commissions on aging, where they hear the needs of their aging population. They try to do things about it, and they work on communication with the seniors in their city. Um, this is a commission, it's not gonna, they're not gonna have a line item in the budget. Anything that they come up with that expends money will come back before council. Y'all got any questions? I'll take them.
Those names, the appointees?
I'm sorry?
They're down, they're down in board appointments. We have to create the commission first and then appoint the board.
Okay.
Yes, all right. I'd appreciate a good vote.
Have a motion to create the commission?
So move.
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
So Mayor, is it, any council member can be, not only commission itself, are we eligible?
That's, that's, that's self-determination. Item five is board appointments. The reappointment of Herman England and Reed Kemp to the Housing Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
So move.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Next is the appointment of Carol Clement, Virginia Conger, April Devery, Marie Law, Delois Morris, Harold Nance, and Richard Ramsey to the Commission, City of Jackson Commission on Aging.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item six, consideration of invoices over ten thousand dollars.
So move.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Further business coming forth of the council? This meeting is adjourned.